Okay. Okay, we ready? Are we on with TV?
Okay.
Recording in progress.
All right. So, good evening, everyone. This is the Needham Board of Zoning Appeals. As you've heard, we're being recorded and also being broadcast on the Needham Cable News. I always say, as a technical matter, in case we were to lose internet and can't continue, all matters are continued till next month, so we don't have to re-advertise. But so far in two years, we've managed to get through our agenda with some glitches, but no lost connections. The first order of business is to deal with the minutes from the last meeting. Someone want to make a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great. So we'll proceed with case number one, which is 68 Willshire Park. Public notice is hereby given that Adam Pace applicant has made application to the Board of Appeals to amend the special permit dated June 17, 2021 by substituting new plans for the revised building plans approved in the special permit properties located at 68 Willshire Park, Needham, in the single residence B District. On that, I think we have Mr. Pace. Good evening.
Good evening.
And, Mr. Chairman, I'll be representing Mr. Pace as well.
Oh, okay. So, welcome, Mr. Gent. So who wants to tell us what's going on?
All right, I will take the ball and present to the board. So you may recall, almost exactly a year ago, Mr. Pace came before the board and got a decision or got approval to do some renovations and additions to his house. There were essentially two pieces to the approval. The first piece was on the north side of the house, which had to do with the space above a garage. That garage and space above had originally been authorized by a variance that was issued in 1984. And although Mr. Pace was staying within the footprint, because it was changing the, you know, the box, basically, we needed further review and a finding that the new plans were within the scope of the 1984 variance, which the board found and approved the plans. And then on the south side of the house, the south corner, there was an addition that was put on in place of what was an existing non-conforming deck and stairs. And that was a special permit, basically, a substitution or alteration, extension, and reconstruction of a portion of the building. And that was a special permit and was the second part of the relief that was granted. All was well and good. Mr. Pace proceeded to hire a contractor. They started work. And as they were starting work, they started having discussions about providing some more light into the second floor and a little bit more headroom. So with that, the architects started having discussions with Mr. Pace about tweaking the design. And they wound up changing, not the footprint, but changing essentially the facade of the second story in front and raising the roof by 18 inches. So with that, I'd like to share my screen and show you, I think this will kind of walk you through the pieces, and I think this will make it easy to understand. All right, everybody see this?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so we start here. This is the elevation that the board reviewed and approved. And as you can see, this little dormer here was part of the changes that were found to be within the scope of the original 1984 variance. And you can't see the work on the backside here, but it's on the, sort of on the backside of the house, which is not actually relevant to why we're before you this evening. So as they moved forward with the design, one change, the first change that was, that came up was to put a, essentially, a gable dormer here in the middle, which basically from this point of the building through to somewhere, somewhere in about here, is within the setback area and does not technically require any zoning relief on its own, provided that it met the applicable requirements. So this dormer in and of itself would not have required review. But this also led to this last design, which you see here, and this is the plans that were submitted to the board with the application, which instead of having just a single dormer in the front, you now have a series of three across the front to provide a better visual appearance, more curb appeal, a more attractive front facade. Now, as indicated, basically, you know, from this, it's actually starts somewhere on here, but basically, this section of the building is not really, it's before you for review, but it technically doesn't require any zoning relief on its own. The reason it's before you is because the decision that was issued by the board referenced a specific set of plans. And in addition, the building inspector, looking at it, basically wanted the board to weigh in and view because it was a change and a deviation from the plans that the board had reviewed and approved. But basically, this piece on its own does not require any zoning relief. It is only because it was a change in plan. In addition, the roof, as I indicated, is being raised up 18 inches, so which is really a very minor negligible amount. But the rising of the roof is in this section, which doesn't require any zoning relief. It's also in this section here, in order to keep the two pieces sort of architecturally relevant and to have a nice visual seam, so there's not too much of a difference here. So in doing that, because this piece was within the scope of what had been reviewed and approved as being within the original 1984 variance, even though the box is the same, the design is the same, because this roof piece is getting lifted up 18 inches, that needs additional review by the board to confirm that it is still within the framework or within the scope of the original 1984 variance. And that is basically it. That's, you know, that's why we're here this evening. It's just for those changes.
All right, thank you. The planning board had no comment and none of the departments. We did get a comment from the conservation that they might have to look at it. I'm not sure why, since you're not really dealing with the part that's close to the conservation area, but you should touch base with them. Does anyone on the board have any questions? Is there anyone from the public here that wants to be heard on this?
There are no hands raised from the public.
Okay, so I'll entertain a motion to allow substitution.
This discussion, so John, this appears to be a planned substitution?
Yes. The building commissioner felt that there were major enough changes that it ought to come back to the board for review and approval. So they're substituting a plan for the one we approved a year ago.
Did we get a copy of the last year's special permit? So it's just amending a special permit by substitution of the plans?
Correct.
Isn't also the variance, is it a substitution of the plan for this SP or the variance of both?
No, I mean, what we found, like in the case we had last month, we found that the original variance allowed violation of the setback, but it did not refer to any specific plan. So that we interpreted the variance to allow construction as long as it didn't incur further into the setback. It really is just a substitution of a plan.
Just on the special permit, nothing to do with the variance?
There was no, there was, we just interpreted the variance. Well, it wasn't a special permit. The plan, the plan we referred to was in connection with our interpretation of the variance.
So an amendment to the special permit allowing the substitution of the plans is all you need?
It's, but it's not a special permit. It's an amendment of the decision.
Well, the notice addresses an amendment of a special permit. That's why I asked.
Okay. The special permit part of it was the alteration of the non-conforming use on the other side of the property. So I guess we must have called it a special permit. Any event, what we need to do is to approve the new plan to substitute for the one we reviewed a year ago.
So I just want to take a look at that document, what that decision was. And did you send that to us?
That was in your packet.
It was in the package.
It was in your packet.
I did not get it. Here it is. All right, so it was a special permit dated June 17, 2021. That's what we called it. So if you don't have a problem with it, Mr. Chair, I would make a motion to amend the special permit issued on June 17, 2021, to allow a substitution of new plans for the revised building plan approved in the special permit and the properties at 68 Willshire Park. I think that's my amendment.
I stand corrected. I think that's a perfectly appropriate motion.
Second that motion?
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, great.
Thank you very much.
We'll move on.
Thank you very much.
Moving on to case number two, 35 Highland Circle. Public notice is hereby given that Zeldorick ADH Needham has paid applications to the Board of Appeals for a special permit under Section 3.2.5.2B, 5.1.2, 5.1.3, any other applicable sections of the bylaw to allow the use of an adult care center, excuse me, the use of an adult daycare facility and to waive strict adherence to parking and parking design requirements associated with the conversion of the ground level garage of a three-floor office building to house an adult day healthcare, health program with capacity of 80 clients and 13 staff members. Properties located at 35 Highland Circle in the mixed-use 128 district. On this, I think we have Mr. Worsy.
Yes, sir. Also with me are Max and Anna Mizaiav, the applicants, and Richard Volk and the architect. I'll lead off and they can answer any questions, or Richard can jump in after I've finished talking. But yes, and I'll also, hopefully this will work. I was going to try to share my screen, but apparently he doesn't want to. But anyway, it is an application for a special permit for an adult daycare facility at 35 Highland Circle. And the applicant already operates the facility at 185 Second Avenue in Needham, which the board permitted in the past. And the board could, if it wants, take a look at the facility, see how it works and see how the parking floor works as well. This particular new use does not generate a lot of parking on site due to the use of vans and the drop-off and pickup of vans and the clients and most, the fact that generally most of the clients arrive on site by van. Vans don't park in the street, but they're parked at the facility off the street. The vans are generally used at 15-minute intervals during the hours of 8:00 to 9:30 a.m., when they're dropped off at the site, and then again from 2:00 to 3:30 p.m., when clients are picked up and leave the site. After 3:30, the daycare facility doesn't really utilize the vans and parking is minimal. Most employees take transportation to the site and also create a minimum need for parking based on uses at other daycare centers that my client operates. The building inspector gave account of parking required by the zoning code, and my client is asking for a parking waiver from these requirements because the building simply doesn't really generate that great a need for parking. There are currently eight tenants at the building, and their leases contain maximum parking requirements. So each tenant cannot exceed the parking that's stated in the lease. The result of this is that the tenants utilize 27 of the available parking spaces on the site. And within the site, there are approximately 65 parking spaces. So that leaves about 38 open parking spaces. Vans add a relatively minimal amount to those spaces. In fact, I drove by the site at 12:30 this afternoon, and I counted about 35 empty parking spaces on the site in the middle of the day. As you noted, the applicant will be using two floors, the ground floor and the above floor of office space. The second floor office space is really used for extra rooms for meetings, meeting rooms, activities in office supplies, and for file storage. The first floor of the space is really where the people are and the activities occur. And the first floor, I believe, requires 24 parking spaces, but again, doesn't really generate much parking demand because of staff and the client parking is located on the ground level of the building. The ground level has a parking calculation of about 23 parking spaces. But the current operation across the way at 185 Second Avenue has about 16 parking spaces for a capacity of 132 clients and 22 staff. This site will have 80 clients and 13 staff. So we were estimating about 10 parking spaces will be needed for that. So if you count the 27 parking spaces available to the tenants and the 10 that are used for the site, that's about 37 parking spaces out of 65. And again, sort of jives with what I saw when I went out to the property today, that about 35 parking spaces will be unused during most of the day. The building inspector made two specific requests of the board and recommendations. First is that there be no parking on Highland Circle. And second, that if a parking waiver is granted and the use of the second floor changes, that the applicant must come back before the board for additional parking waivers. We agree with both those requirements, and we'd be happy to have those both as conditions. The Board of Health requested a food plan review and access to trash and recycling dumpsters. Because of my client's current facility, it's familiar with the Board of Health requirements and is already in process of working with them and has no objection to those being added as conditions to any approval as well. Richard Volk and the architect is here tonight and can answer any questions about the actual use of the building. There is one other point that I'd like to make on parking, just so the board knows. I know there's a concern about, in that area, about nighttime use of parking in the parking facilities and due to a local restaurant that's there. I did check, there is no overnight parking at this property for the restaurant. I believe it's 21 Highland Circle that's used for that overnight parking. So there are no other users that are going to be using this property at night for parking. So I'll turn it over to Richard for any additional comments that he might have, and then we can take any questions that the board has. Richard?
Mr. Vulcan, you're muted. You need to unmute.
Richard, your lower left-hand corner of your screen, you're muted. So just click on that and you'll unmute.
Daphne, you can probably unmute.
Should have done it.
Zoom failure. It's a horrible feeling.
Really? I know what to help.
We've all been there.
Mr. Vulcan, look for the microphone. It should be a little red microphone with, look under, you should have, at the bottom of your screen, there should be a border. When you take your cursor down to the bottom, and then at the very right-hand side, there should be a little icon that looks like a microphone. And just press that and turn that so that you'll have your audio back. Because.
Also, if you put your cursor on top of the screen, there's a blue mute button at the top. If you click mute, you will be unmuted.
Yeah, I can only ask him to unmute, but I can't.
Maybe we should just proceed with any questions the board has, and I'll see if I can answer them. If Richard can't unmute himself, but we could ask Max in the end.
There you go. Can you hear me now? Yes.
Perfect.
Okay, I'm sorry. This is, what the site is, this is the present location of the proposed adult care center as it's proposed to be laid out. Existing presently, there's 17, I went over and actually counted today, there's 17 parking spots in that underneath, call it first floor garage area. This section of the garage, yeah, this section of the garage is existing. They are storage areas, and there's just going to keep them as such. Anything beyond this to the right is actually not being used because this is where the elevator, the machine rooms, this is actually going to be a wall right across the wall here. So we're dealing with an area of this size within the garage area. Now, if I can just get real lucky and get back to, okay. So to come back to the parking site, the, actually, the.
Well, I take it you're going to eliminate all the parking and turn it into usable space?
Yeah, like I said, there's 17 spots in there. And that's max.
But you're going to complete the whole first floor, is what I understand, and use that as a facility?
We're going to be completing about, I would say, three fifths of the first floor. This, the area on the right is the elevator and lobby area. It's really not part of the parking area. It's raised, it's off on the entrance coming in this direction. So really, in comparison to the operation on the Second Avenue site, it's completely different, much more reduced, much, much more reduced. The amount of space that is existing in the parking lot, and my office, by the way, is right around the corner, and my window overlooks this site. This site, at no time, and I've been here for about eight years, this site has never seen greater than 50% capacity at its worst condition.
In terms of parking?
Yeah, I'm talking about the parking, I beg your pardon. The remaining part of the building is dealing with storage and office buildings. I understand the building commissioner, and then the bylaw measures the parking based on the outside skin to the outside skin of the building, and therefore, you come up with this major packing complex, which is rarely used, very rarely used, and at the most, at the most, 50%, most days less. The allocated, for example, the allocated spaces for PGOSO and Sons, which is the contractor that's doing the work out here on Highland Avenue, shows three vehicles, but that's only at night where they put these pickup trucks that they use early in the morning on the road. So that's only an evening use, not restrictive, but because I have seen one of them parked right about in this area here, number 10, during the day. So there is an abundance of parking, the parking is, the volume of parking is dictated by the bylaw. And I understand that. And therefore, when we analyze what we're taking out versus what we're doing, it is well beyond, the parking spots are well beyond the required. The area where I'm highlighting right in here is.
Actually, I don't think we're seeing this screen. No.
I haven't seen any of this, so.
Yeah, there's no sharing of the screen here.
Yeah.
Mr. Vulcan, hit the share screen. It should be at the bottom of your, the bottom banner.
Yeah.
And then hit share.
Yeah. Okay.
And then you press that.
Yeah. Okay, let me, I'm sorry. This is, this is, I, this thing, trying to get this thing over.
You know, sir, we have the plans, the four plans as well. It may not be necessary.
Okay. I'm just not.
Yeah. So can you tell us a little bit about the daycare facility you currently, you currently run and what you plan to do here, about your company and your background?
Good evening, everybody. Can you guys hear us right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm Anna, this is Max, and we are the license holder of the Adult Care Center. And we've been running the ADH centers from 2005. We have a couple sites, three more sites that we're operating. This site is, we are basically open seven days a week, and we provide the adult health services. It's a day program. We open eight to four, which participants are leaving about from 2:00 to 3:30. So after that, our operation stops after four o'clock. We provide transportation to and from the ADH. So it's a day program, and the transportation included in the service, we provide the transportation. All our clients are transported by vans and, what's up? Yeah, but by our vans, yeah, obviously, we have our own transportation. So we provide health services. We have, you know, pitch end, but we provide meals during the day. We connect people to the doctors and all that stuff. So basically, we're trying to keep people, elderly people, in their homes versus so they don't get to the nursing home. So we provide all the services so they can stay comfortably at home and have all the services that they need for the period as long as it can be done. And mainly, the population that we're serving mainly is a low-income or no-income people. And the areas that we service is Needham and surrounding areas. So what else can we say, Max?
So just to be clear, it sounds like that all your, the patients or your customers are dropped off by bus and they're not driving to the facility, correct?
Yep.
Okay, that's important for this parking issue.
Therefore, we're using like four or five vans so we can bring people to our facility. And afternoon, when they have lunch, we take them at home. And we have right now, Adult Care, not far from this place, as mentioned, our, it's 185 Second Avenue in Needham. And we operated there, it was previous owner, but right now, it's like from 2006. So it's 16 years, you know? And right now, we moving from this site, from 185 Second Avenue to 35 Circle, because we down, there are plenty, yes, because we downsizing, as you mentioned before, we have capacity, 132 clients on previous, but right now, it will be 80. So it's significantly less. And you know, it's for different reasons. So basically, it's like, main reason we using this Adult Care and this government-provided service because it prevents them to get to nursing homes. And these people get as active as possible, and therefore, they live much longer, and the quality of life is very good. Yeah.
When was the permit issued for your current facility?
I think it was 2006. I think it was two thousand and six.
And when did you take over management of it?
We took it a couple years ago.
Two twenty nineteen, we uh we became a new owners.
But we have other facilities in Newton and in Natick and all of them like, you know, we have same, you know, similar operation and have never have any complaints and you know.
No, I was just trying to remember, I remember permitting that. And I didn't know it was that long ago.
Yeah, it's past, you know, sixteen years. Yeah, it was named Otrada, now it's named Zdorovye.
Correct.
Zdorovye meaning healthy, you know.
Thank you.
Yeah. Is there a name to this uh facility?
Zdorovye.
Adult Day Health Center.
What was, what'd you call it, Adult Day Care Center?
Yeah.
Zdorovye Adult Day Health Center.
Oh, that's Russian or something?
Zdorovye is like Russian meaning health, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, uh ladies, gentlemen, I I have two problems with this application. Parking is a way in the bylaw of limiting the size of a building that can go on a site. And um this in all my time is literally the first time we've been asked to let someone expand a building and convert a building that currently complies with the Needham parking requirements to one that will no longer uh comply. And I don't have any doubts that because of your particular use there will be sufficient parking, but you won't always be there. And once we allow this building to be built out um your space could go to a different tenant who has much more of a parking demand as well as other parts of the building could have people who have a bigger parking demand. And as I say, this is the first time we've ever been asked to let someone take a building that conforms as the parking and let it become a building that has inadequate parking. Uh the second issue I have is uh I was by there again today for the second time is I I don't think that the parking complies with the design requirements in the bylaw. And you have not requested a waiver of the design requirements, and I think you probably need one. But um the big issue is, is, you know, we let you expand this building getting rid of seventeen parking spaces, converting a building that currently complies with the parking requirements to one that doesn't, what happens after you leave and other tenants come in who need a lot more parking?
And now I say.
Mr. Orsi?
Yeah, I I think Max was gonna speak, but I'll I'll go and then Max can go, you can, you know, the board can add any conditions to the waiver if wants to.
Could could we add a condition that they'll undo the construction?
Well, I think you can add a condition that they have to have uses that are consistent with the with the lower parking requirement.
Yes, yes, we could. But we can't make them, you know, I don't think it's realistic to say they're gonna undo the construction where they're basically adding a floor to this building by completing the basement.
First of all, it's not basement, you know, it's first floor, it's first floor. Second, regardless.
It's a, it's the first floor that's currently used for parking.
Yeah, but it's not basement.
Okay, I'm sorry, I won't call it a basement, but you're 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 basically adding a floor of usable space to this building. And instead of adding parking spaces, you're taking away seventeen.
I agree with you, we're taking parking space because it's too much there and but we like trading it, you know. We losing maybe some parking, but we adding to this building, creating new floor. And why we do it? Because by law, by DPH, we need first floor, first floor for our clients. This way, we transfer in this first floor.
I I I understand, I understand why you wanna do it, and I have no problem with the services and the operation. I'm really raising for the board, uh we really prepared to let someone expand a building and convert it to something that doesn't have a required number of parking spaces. And I suppose if we're gonna, if we're gonna do that, I I think what we are getting ourselves into is we're gonna have to undertake the police who goes into this property in the future. Because they'd be, they'd be compelled to come back to us only if there's a new tenant that had a higher parking demand under the bylaw than what this tenant has. And and this tenant has a pretty high parking demand uh under the building inspector's rules, so unless we put something explicit in here that we're gonna review new tenants uh is unlikely that the bylaw would require them to come back to us. So I guess I'm looking for reactions from my fellow board members.
No, I also actually want to add like right now where we operating. We operating by special permit where it's same, you know, uh it's not allowed, it's busy. But we got like our previous owner got this place on one eighty-five second avenue.
Al- al- almost, almost every month, we're faced with a decision where a commercial property does not have enough parking spaces and we're granting a waiver. But it's not a property that's looking to physically expand the usable space. That's what makes this case so completely different than any I've ever had.
Um, I just wanted.
John, I mean, we we've had cases, uh I I forget where it was, where we were granting a parking waiver and there was vacant space?
Yes, that 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 was across the street where the Montessori school is and
Yeah, and
And and so we put in a condition that future tenants would have to be approved by us.
Right, so I I I, to an extent, I think it's it's comparable to that. I guess the the question is the applicant before us is only an applicant with respect to those two floors, not the owner of the building, so I I don't know what.
Well, I I mean, I think it's, I think it's i- i- it's it's similar, but really quite different because here they're asking to basically expand the building by adding a floor that's usable.
I understand, but uh from the parking perspective.
Yeah.
Uh I I think it's it's analogous.
I think to double click on what Peter was saying there, John, as well, Mr. Chair. Um when I drove by, there's a big for lease sign in front of the building. Is that just that second floor space that this applicant is seeking to take? Or is there other space in the building that's also for lease um that could also trigger additional relief issues?
The second floor, I think.
That for lease sign, I think is from is the current owner has, they will be, but my clients will be purchasing the site and using those two floors.
They're gonna, they're gonna purchase the building.
Purchasing the building?
Yes.
Oh, okay, I I don't think we were aware of that.
Yes, therefore, we we are going to stay there for a long time, you know.
Yeah, it's a kind of a very um, you know, in demand per se business, just because nobody wants to deal with what we uh working with, looking at elderly people, and that's why it's always gonna be in demand. So that's why we're purchasing the building and we planning to move there because, you know, uh we we don't think anytime you know, in foreseeable future, we're gonna close or uh or, you know, have somebody else rented. And I think that would be another, you know, weight into our, you know, we trying to say here.
Respectfully, though, your enrollment has gone down, though, it sounds like you had an enrollment of a hundred and twenty, now you're seeking eighty.
Yeah, yes, it uh it decreased enrollment, it decreased. However, after the pandemic, we have more severe cases where people like, because they've been, you know, limited with the um you know, what they were doing here and this and that, there's more demand for people who are in more in need of the services. Um, you know.
But you're getting back to the parking, so the building commissioner has outlined uh uh demand, current demand with this adult use of eighty-eight.
Under the bylaw, he says there'll be twenty-three short of what they should have.
Right, right, and so sixty-five currently exist after the, after the renovation, after removal of these seventeen spaces, so it's twenty-three waiver. And so the issue that John's raising is that if future tenants come in, office space or higher use, where they get a park and what does the board do? And so, John, you feel uncomfortable making a condition uh a waiver of twenty-three for the current uses? And future uses will require board approval, that's cumbersome on the board to oversee and monitor?
Yeah, I I, you know, I I I again, right now, we have a property that has plenty of parking spaces. Once they take away seventeen spaces and fill in the first floor we got a building that doesn't have enough parking spaces. Even even though, even even though it works, I I have no doubt it works for this use.
Well, let let me raise a a couple thoughts. Since they're purchasing the property and they're basically, if we condition the special permit that any change of use any change of use would require approval by this the the board. They're in effect impacting the marketability of their property in the future cuz it it they are subjecting to this review, it's not just an office tenant, it's anyone. I don't wanna guess and try to create limitations on what uses. I I I think if there's, if you're going to approve this, it's any change of use, any any different use, any different tenant. The board has to approve it. Uh I just wanna make one other note, they did, I believe, request a design waiver.
Did they?
They did.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry.
No.
I missed it.
So.
Well, John, would would we, would it be any use in the building or would it be just the two floors that this daycare are gonna occupy?
It impacts the whole building, uh just think about some things that we've talked about with some of the retail centers. We're giving a significant parking waiver and in the future, the next use is gonna m- make it even worse. The area has plenty of parking, but we've always had parking issues. Uh it's a very interesting sort of neighborhood with the restaurant. Uh we've always had parking count issues there. Uh and reciprocal parking rights and leases uh uh and um so it's it's troubling that they're reducing it, but the use is a good use. And it's something I think we should support and try to help them with that. But at the same juncture, they're going to be restricting what they're gonna be able to do with the property in the future. Um I mean, that's the only way I think you can approve it.
Yeah, I, if I may, I think I would agree with that, and I just wanna make sure my my clients understand before we go too much further, so Ma- Max and Anna, if they if they allow the use, the board would condition it so that any change in use of any type or nature requires that you come back to the board. Where you're converting, where you're converting a portion of adding to the building and making the building greater it would be difficult to change to another use unless the board approves it, because now you're parking, you've taken away parking. So that could impact if you at some point when you want to go and sell the building, if ever. You've got less parking and therefore less uses at the property, but that's something you would have to accept as a condition of getting the special permit.
Yeah, we agree with it because our main purpose to buy this building is for our service, you know, therefore why we will change it, you know.
No, but the board is, the board is rightfully pointing out to you that if ten years from now you decide to sell the building you you would have to make sure that you're, and any buyer of the property has to come back to the board for any use.
We understand it, you know, it's no problem, yeah.
And you're and you're willing to accept that condition?
Yes, we accept it.
So I always caution people, you're you're punting it down the future of what you're going to do for today's and I'm not saying everybody in the board agrees with that. Uh I just think it's it's a wonderful use, you've been there for many years, not you two, but uh prior use. And it's something our 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 community needs. Uh I'm just uh it's it's just a very tough little area and for parking. And and just eliminating spaces is sort of against what we're trying to achieve, which is to create more parking spaces, so anyway, I've said enough on that uh.
A que- question for uh Mr. Orsi, uh there's been some discussion that the the neighboring restaurant had access or may have entered into a a lease with this building, uh can you comment on that? Is is that 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 did not happen?
No, there is no lease with this building. Uh I believe the current owner of the building owns another building at twenty-one Highland Circle, and that's the building that has the lease. There is no lease for for nighttime parking at this building.
Thank you.
Well, that that's also the information that we gathered is that there was a lease for thirteen spaces, but it expired in two thousand and twenty.
Okay, that's important.
So I'm I'm not su- I'm not sure that they, at this point, that they even have a lease.
Uh I thought they were all under common ownership at one particular point, restaurants.
I think it's a fa- I think a family owns it all.
Yeah.
Um it 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 I mean, we do have this little quirk, I know, that doesn't directly affect you, but we've issued a special permit that allows the restaurant to expand if they get eleven off-site parking spaces. And we understood that they were gonna get them at this property. Now, they haven't done the expansion and I don't think that they've gotten the lease. But um that that's just an ongoing complication.
I I don't wanna speak out of turn on that, I I did talk to our seller today who told me that they that they have parking for that restaurant available at twenty-one. So again, that's, I I heard that from counsel from my seller, so secondhand knowledge in a sense, but it's not this site.
But the the lease that just expired was this site, but
There is no, but there is no lease at this site.
There's currently no lease.
Yes.
Yeah, we 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 dislike impacting other relationships by doing something and it goes down the road. But if you're you're telling us it's a different building, there's no lease in the place, you're buying a building without this burden by this lease and uh they're not gonna get their eleven parking spaces here anyway, um you know, that sort of avoids that issue. And thank you for looking into that, John.
And also counsel, Mr. Orsi, that um the the thirteen or so staff that come, you mentioned, I think, in your presentment that they uh seem to be taking public transportation, aren't using automobiles?
Yeah, and I'll I'll let uh Max and Anna address that, but they very much do not come by automobile, Max.
What?
The current, the current staff
Yeah.
Come by public transportation for the most part.
But yeah, of course, it's uh
Can I answer that? Cuz we have some uh people who live around there, like thirty, three hundred, is it three hundred second avenue? They just basically walk, we have a couple working from there. We have another two couples that driving, so you know, one's driving, one's with a passenger, basically, so they use one car for uh getting, and then we have some people who get the public transportation and just walk from uh from whatever Highland Avenue. So from our experience that, you know, in all our centers, we actually have people who uh you know, some percentage that they not uh not driving, not all of them driving.
So you're gonna end up, if I can follow the count, which is always difficult, with twenty-one point six spaces?
Twenty-one six was.
There'll be sixty-five, as I understand it. After, after you eliminate the seventeen spaces, am I correct, there'll still be sixty-five?
That that is correct.
Sixty-five physical spaces, not sixty-five and a half.
Now, sixty-five, now it's using only twenty-seven, you know, we can add ten spaces because it's five for vans, five for our employee, so it will be twenty-seven plus ten, it's thirty-seven. We have sixty-five. Of course, what will be in the future, if we put restrictions that anything changes must be go through this uh commission. I think we will protect it from changing, you know, any stuff as you mentioned before. But as it was before, is it now, and it's uh in our future, we have plenty of spaces. But I agree with you because you're concerned about lack of parking for other. But we cannot, you know, answer for this for restaurant, for other neighbors, for our concern, for our building, for our place. I think it's reasonably sound, you know, that we doing this place better than it now, you know, we improve it. We will improve it, not only this, we will come again and improve even Charles River Bank, you know. So we are not just trying to move from one place to another. We will everywhere we came, we just improve this place, and I think we will have a good relationship with city of Needham. Same as with
There's another issue uh that the concern is about uh some of the neighbors, the restaurants might park there, I assume you'd be amenable to posting a uh parking for tenants only sign?
Yes.
And and I I don't see any need and that where I was getting at uh with all the employees who take public transportation. We don't have to restrict it for this, this this seems to be plenty of parking for their use.
Yeah, I I I think there's no doubt, there's plenty of parking with this use and the current bunch of tenants. Um yeah, and before we move to a motion on this, I'm gonna suggest that they shouldn't have I'm gonna suggest that they shouldn't have to come back if an office use gets replaced with an office use.
What do you, so, so what do you decide? I mean, I, I can't imagine.
I guess, I, I, I think we should make them come back only if the adult. Care space is replaced. I mean, if there's an office use replaces a current office use. That is not gonna make any magical big burden.
Well, that, that would not be a change in use. But how, how about if there's a medical use or retail use?
Yeah, what, what if there's a more intense, what if there's a more intensive view? Well, then, then the bylaw requires them back or, 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 or we can require them. I mean, if they were to try to put a medical offices in here. That has a bigger demand under the bylaw than office and by this, the, it requires them to come. Before us.
Look, look, so I, I don't know.
Yeah, that, that, that's, that's my thought, that if, if an office use is being replaced with an office use. I, I, I don't think we need to review it.
Agree.
My, my concern would only be if the adult care space. Changes. But, you know, whatever, whatever you want to move.
Yeah, no, no, I'm just thinking a lot. So you can have the third, or, or, or third or fourth floor uses become medical use. I think we would like to get back in front of the board. It's a higher, in, in, intense use, more parking.
Well, it, it would be required to by the bylaw, we can make that explicit that if the office use.
I think so, yeah.
If the office uses changes to something other than office, it needs to be reviewed, or if, uh. Adult space changes, that needs to be reviewed. But I don't think they should have to come back if they replace one office tenant with another office tenant.
Can you say any use that requires a higher parking, uh, ratio will require? I mean, office to office.
Well, uh, you know, I'm not, I'm, I'm not sure that's when we have a mixed use property. Which I think this probably would be, but we can make that explicit. That if there's any use that has a parking requirement more than office. They have to come back, but if they're replacing office with office, I don't think they should have to come back to the board. I, I don't think we should be spending our time on that hearing. Uh, uh, and it, that's a real burden on the owner.
Yeah, I agree. It's a burden for them, it's a burden for the board, yeah.
Yeah, but it gets to the point that you made originally, which I think was a pretty significant and valid point, is that we're eliminating parking spaces. Uh, and increasing the building and making it non-compliant or, or close to it, so, um, I don't know, um. I can go with the flow, uh, I believe they need to come back for, let's say, suggest this. Uh, any change in the a- adult care use. And any change in any other use in the building that has a higher than, uh. A higher parking requirement than office. Does that do it?
I think that would do it.
I, I, I'd, I'd want to add, just because it was raised in your building inspector's letter, he's asking for two additional conditions, which we're acceptable with. So I think those should be also be included in your motion in the decision.
Correct.
No parking on the street and that if the second floor, the, well, you're basically saying it to. Specifically, if the use of the second floor changes.
Changes, we want.
Wants you back before the board.
Yeah.
So he was, he was more expansive than that, John. He said any change of use.
But just of the second floor, we're looking at the whole building.
Right.
And, and a use that increases intensity.
Well, that's what we, we said, that's a more limited, less limiting. He said any change of use, period. In the second floor, that's what the inspector asked for, so.
I think the. Almost any change of, the second floor is gonna be used largely for where, for storage.
Correct.
And so, and so it has a lesser parking requirement, so. Almost any change in the second floor is gonna have a higher parking requirement.
But. Hand raised, Mr. Chair as well.
Yes.
Yes, I'm sorry, if there's some member of the public that wants to be heard, we should hear them.
Correct.
Bertor Rosa has been promoted as a panelist.
Hi, um, I'm actually Maria Iriti, let me, um, rename.
And so you're the owner of the building, right?
I am, I'm the owner of twenty-one Highland Circle, thirty-five Highland Circle. And eighteen Highland Circle, and the restaurant Spiga is my tenant. Um, when they, they came before you, um, I want to address those, those parking spaces that, that you talked about. They came before you a couple of years ago, um, to, uh, they wanted to build an addition. And the question was, at night, after five o'clock, when my tenants at twenty-one Highland Circle left. Would I let them park at twenty-one Highland Circle? And I said, yes. Nothing was ever put in writing because they never built that addition. Uh, but that was always at, uh, at twenty-one Highland Circle. But the other thing I wanted to point out, um, that all of you drove by there today. And you noticed all the empty parking spaces. Did you notice that at twenty-one Highland Circle, we were repaving the parking lot? And all the cars from all the tenants at twenty-one Highland Circle were parked at thirty-five Highland Circle today. And you still saw, what, thirty-five empty spaces? And that, that included the, um, all the tenants from the building next door. Because they couldn't park in our lot because we were repaving the lot, so, um. So there, there's, there's a lot of empty, extra parking. Parking on Highland Circle has never been an issue. Somebody said that it was. I've owned the properties since, um. Well, twenty-one Highland Circle since nineteen seventy-nine and, and thirty-five Highland Circle since nineteen eighty-four. When they were houses. Um, and it's never, not one day has parking been a problem on Highland Circle. So I'm very supportive of, of them as my neighbor. I've met them, they're very responsible, very caring. They want to make improvements to the property, they want to make improvements to the circle. The circle is not a town property, it's a private road. So we have to pave it. They've talked about making, uh, you know, all sorts of improvements. I think they'll be a great neighbor. And I'm very supportive of, uh, this proposal. If you have any questions for me about the parking, I'd be happy to, um, answer them, but. Right now, all the tenants that are in the building, um, they have limits to the number of spaces. Uh, that they can use, and, uh, as somebody pointed out, the current leases, um, limit this, the parking to twenty-seven spaces.
Are the top two stories completely occupied currently?
No, there's a small space on the third floor, um, that, uh. I think it's thirteen hundred square feet that, uh, is vacant.
All right, thank you. So we, are we ready to move forward, Mr. Tamkin? Are you willing, willing to? Uh, frame a motion?
It, it's actually Howard's turn, but I will try. So Howard can amend mine as he goes through it, so, um. I'd make a motion, uh, to approve, uh, a special permit. Uh, for the adult day. Care center. Zro Drovie, if I got that correct. And, um, to waive, uh, the strict adherence to the parking. As outlined in the application and the design requirements for the parking lot. And with several restrictions, it's going to have eighty clients or patients, thirteen staff members. Uh, conditioned upon any change of use. Uh, that has a greater capacity than office or any change. In the adult, uh, daycare use will require. Uh, an application before the zoning board of appeals for any modification or change of use. Um, I want to pause in that motion and ask the question, did we want to say? Any change of use in the second floor will also require, or is everybody comfortable with what I just said?
I, I, I'm, I'm comfortable with what you said. Well, maybe because it, it, there. I think the building inspector was referring to the space that, that this applicant is going to occupy. And we've said that any change in the space they occupy has to come to the board, so I think you've caught.
And then there were two other conditions that the building inspector asked for. One is that there's no parking of daycare vans on Highland Circle. And the other one, we just addressed it. So that discombobulated motion was mine, uh, and I was looking for someone to second that.
I just wanted to clarify that this is also a special permit to allow, uh, the, the use. Of adult daycare at this facility.
Correct.
I, I, I'm not sure if it was clear in the motion, but I think it should become clear because it's a request for special permit for the use as well as for parking waivers. In design.
Correct.
Do you second that, Howard?
Yes, with that amendment, I second it.
All in favor?
Congratulations.
Thank you, thank you for your time, appreciate that.
Thank you all, thank you.
Thank you, have a good night, everyone.
At this juncture, since I'm recused for the next hearing, I'm going to say, uh, good night to everybody and we'll see you in July.
And, and remember, at this moment, we don't know if we're gonna have to meet in person.
As I indicated, that if it is in person, I will probably be late, uh. Driving quickly down one twenty-eight to make it by eight o'clock. If it's on Zoom, I can make it earlier.
Is there a chance that, what, what has to happen, the select would have to vote to continue the, uh, uh, Zoom hearing?
No, it's the legislature.
The state?
Yes, this, we're, we're, we're relieved from the public meeting law by virtue of state legislation that. Originally expired in December and then was extended through July first. And I guess we've heard some rumors, there's talk that it may be extended, but who knows? If you'll recall, we had to have one in-person meeting. Kind of in the interim between the expiration of the last one and. Um, the renewal by the legislature.
So, so.
So, so absent legislative action, we have to meet in person in July.
So Peter is away, so that means that Nick Howard and John be here at seven thirty and I'll show up, uh, as soon as I can.
Okay, thank you.
See, I'll be there.
You gave your donuts, John.
Thank you, sir, bring those donuts, see ya.
And coffee and coffee.
All right, so, so, um, case number three is six seventy Highland Avenue, twenty-four Webster Street. And twenty, twenty-eight Greendale Avenue, Temple, Beth Shalom and Davenport Holding Properties Inc. applicants. Applied to the Board of Appeals for a special permit amendment under sections one point four point two. Five point one point one point five, five point one point two, five point one point three. And any other applicable sections of the bylaw to provide relief from the following, for the following. And A, an extension of the two thousand fifteen permit to expand the parking lot. Due to the acquisition of the properties at twenty-eight Webster and twenty-eight Greendale. B, a waiver of strict adherence to the parking space and parking design requirements. And C, the continuation of pre-existing non-conforming buildings and structures and uses thereon. This request is associated with the demolition of an existing house and garage at two eighty-four Webster. And the construction of a parking lot connected to the existing temple driveway and main parking lot. And the renovations of the house and garage at twenty-eight Greendale Avenue to be used as additional classroom space. The property is located at the locations that I mentioned. Um, we got word that you've had, um. Several meetings with the neighbors and at least someone, I'm not sure whom. Submitted a list of conditions that are supposedly agreed upon, but why don't you bring us up to date?
Okay, attorney, attorney Robert Smart for, uh, for the temple. Um, you heard the temple presentation the last time around, um, you know. And, and most of the team that you heard from last time is, is on this call. Uh, we responded to comments from, you know, various town boards and a number of neighbors expressed their concerns. Uh, there were three principal issues that, that I heard anyway from, from the, um, from the neighbors. One was landscaping at the, for the new, uh, parking area at two eighty-four Webster. Second was a reduction in the traffic on Davenport Road, which is a private way. And prohibit, basically prohibiting student drop-off and pickup at twenty-eight Greendale Avenue. Uh, and preserving the existing vegetation at that site. Uh, since, since that meeting in May, uh, there've been, there was a, a, a meeting, uh, with neighbors and several temple personnel. There've been, uh, numerous, uh, emails, uh, telephone conversations. Um, Ashley, um, I'm not sure if I can pronounce her name correctly, Sheffley. Who is an attorney drafted a set of proposed conditions, uh, to a, a, a potential decision by the board. Um, and as I understand it, she's not formally representing, uh, other neighbors. But she has been acting as a spokes, spokesperson and as a liaison, uh, with the temple, uh, for other neighbors. Uh, Gillian Erdos, who was here, uh, beside me right here, and this is, this is her laptop. Uh, and I reviewed Ashley's draft conditions. We suggested some revisions. There was a lot of back and forth, a lot of negotiation. Uh, the result is a set of proposed conditions, uh, which, uh, Ashley filed with the board earlier today by email. Um, and we can show this on the screen. If you give us a second. Okay, there they are. All right, so, um. My understanding, eh, eh, from the back and forth. That is the, it's the, the neighbors are satisfied with this list of proposed conditions to a board decision approving the requested relief. If that's the case, uh, the temple is willing to accept them, uh, as written. And we understand that, you know, the board, eh, eh, if and when it writes a decision, may want to modify the language slightly. But, uh, just, just to, just to summarize, I don't want to go word by word here. Um, the first, uh, the first, uh, proposed condition limits the use of the Davenport exit by the temple, uh, effective September thirtieth. And requires maintenance of, of a movable, a movable physical barrier between the temple parking lot and Davenport. Uh, second, the temple is going to install trees, shrubs and landscaping as provided in the latest plan from, um, from, uh. Hammered Walsh. Uh, the number, number three is that, um, student drop-off and pickup, uh, at twenty-eight Greendale is prohibited. And limits are being placed on the number of vehicles parking there. Number four, the renovations at twenty-eight Greendale are limited primarily to the interior of the house and garage. With exceptions needed to complete the project. Uh, and existing trees and shrubs over specified size, uh, are, cannot be removed. Uh, number five, the two thousand fifteen special permit remains in force. And number six, uh, there's some limits placed on signage, which can be placed at twenty-eight Greendale. Um, since the, since the last hearing. Um, our, the, our landscape architectural team, uh, made, made, you know, was also involved in the discussions with the neighbors. Uh, and made a number of revision, uh, a, a number of revisions to the proposed, uh, planting plan. And I believe that the neighbors are satisfied on it. So there was a second. Um, iteration, uh, of that landscape plan, which was, which was dated, uh, June fourteenth. And, um, David Walsh, just this afternoon, noticed, uh, uh, one mistake. Uh, in the, in the, uh. In the, the July, the June fourteenth version, so there's now a June sixteenth version and, um, he'll, he'll show that to you. Uh, and explain, and explain what's basically what the landscaping is proposed to look like. So I, it, it was your permission, I'd like to turn it over to David to present the landscaping plan.
Thank you, Bob.
You know, and, and I don't think, we, I don't think we need it in detail, as long as the neighbors understand it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm gonna turn it over to Nelson, who's, uh, much more articulate about plant materials than I am. So Nelson, you wanna take over? You're on mute, Nellie.
You're muted, Mr. Hammer? Need to unmute yourself.
There you go. One of the most important discussions we had was the size of the shade trees that we are proposing for the property there, I believe four different species. And we originally specified them at two to two and a half inch caliper. After discussing this with the, the neighbors, we decided to bump them up to three and a half to four inch caliper. And in one case, uh, the drawing shows that the honey locust are four inches without there being a range. Um, I should point out, and this is, this is important for everyone to get, uh, an understanding of sizes of.
Um I should point out, and this is this is important for everyone to get an understanding of sizes of trees. The um American Landscape and Nursery Association has a a Bible called the American Standard for Nursery Stock. And uh all trees over one inches in caliper are are graded by caliper, not by height. So um if you go to a nursery and want to buy an eighteen foot high maple, it'll be difficult to do that because they don't walk around with a twenty-five foot uh or or fifteen foot uh uh sticks that have the measuring on them. They they measure by caliper. And um one thing that Dave and I would like to recommend to uh the board, actually to the board and to the temple for construction documentation would be to specify that the trees will be three to four and a half, a three and a half to four inch caliper and must have a minimum height of eighteen feet um as required by the town of Needham. That way, it will give us enough um oomph to uh to get a contractor to abide by our request rather than just guessing what the size of the tree might be.
Sir, can you repeat what you just mentioned, what what you're what you're recommending?
Oh, we're we're recommending that the the major shade trees, um of which there are four different species, are specified to be three and a half to four inches in caliper. Um we have to specify a range. If we say that it's um four inches in caliper and it's um a sixteenth of an inch less than that, it can be rejected. So we we provide a range that that gives the nursery a reasonable amount of leeway and and making sure that the plant meets meets our specifications.
So you're saying three to four inch caliber, not inch.
Caliper, C A L I P E R, is the diameter of the tree measured six inches above the ground. That's another point I'd like to point out. The nursery industry measures the caliper at six inches above grade. Many towns and municipalities measure it four feet above the ground, which is considered at breast height or A B H. You might see that in some of your uh literature.
But I I don't think there's any Needham requirement that applies to this. It's gonna be what we write in a decision.
Okay, well, um so uh Dave and I would like to recommend that we specify three and a half to four inches in caliper for all of the shade trees, plus a minimum height of eighteen feet um as a requirement of the town of Needham um in order to get the contractor to abide by our specification. And that would satisfy the the butters and it would satisfy the the temple.
We can do that.
If if you don't want to go through, I'm sorry?
I I I don't think you need to go through the plan. I think what we ought to do is hear from the butters and find out if they're satisfied now with the landscape plan.
Sure.
I I mean, I mean, that's really our concern. If if they're satisfied, I think we're satisfied.
Sounds good.
Okay, so Daphne, do we have?
Yes, Ashley Schufler. She's been promoted.
Yeah, well, thank thank you. Thank you for your efforts to negotiate this to a resolution.
Good evening. Hi, um I'm Ashley Scheifli. I I am the person that uh Mr. Smart referenced earlier, and I just I just want to clarify my role. I I I do not represent, I am an attorney, um and and that's fine, but I do not represent anyone other than myself. Um I I've sort of played the role of trying to consolidate neighborhood concerns and and put pen to paper, but I I don't formally and formally in any way represent my neighbors there. Um you know, I I I just wanted to to clarify that. We have had several community meetings with the temple and um we have submitted these conditions. I guess uh my position would be um if you're inclined to, if the board is inclined to grant the special permit with the conditions, I would not oppose the project. If there was an issue with one of the conditions and or or one or more of the conditions and the board were inclined to grant the special permit with modified conditions or without the conditions, I I would renew my objections to to the project. In terms of the the changes that were just made to the landscaping plan, I have not seen those, but they sounded okay. Um I know that that's not a a definite answer, but I think as long as the height is in there, we had just for some context, we had the height in there um and then it was taken out. So if it's three and a half to four inch caliper with an eighteen foot minimum on on the shade trees, I I I think that's fine. I haven't seen the plan that they're talking about. Um but if that's the only change, I, you know, I I think I'm okay with that. Um again, speaking for myself. And um I if I'm happy to answer other questions or have other neighbors speak if other neighbors are here. I'll I'll be here for the duration of the meeting. So.
Alright, thank you. I I I mean, I think I think we're inclined to accept the substance of all of these conditions. Um and and let's see if I I I think it it seems to satisfy and address all the comments that I've seen in the various correspondence we've received, but let's see if anyone else from the neighborhood wants to speak or is dissatisfied.
There are no hands raised among the public?
Great. And as again, I don't know if you heard me, I said thank you for taking the lead to negotiate this. It's very helpful. It's very helpful that we don't have to do it here on a Zoom meeting open to the world. It's much more constructive if you can all do it privately.
Yeah, no, I I didn't hear that, so I appreciate you saying that and I I will make a an on-the-record apology to Daphne for uh sending this in at the eleventh hour again, but hopefully it smoothes the process this time. Sorry, Daphne.
Well, this time she was working, this 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 time she took Wednesday off and was working today, so.
Okay, so it all worked out.
I think we have another hand up, Daphne?
Uh yes, we do. Going to promote Ken Lundberg?
I um live right across from the property that will be taken down where the parking lot will go in. I just want to want to affirm what what Ashley has said and uh just weigh in and say that um everything, everything seems to be um, you know, you know, in in line with the the meetings that we've had, the conversations we've had. I just want to enter that in for the record.
Thank you. Anyone else, Stephanie?
Nope, we have no no hands raised from the public.
Alright, so Mr. Golden, Mr. Ligerson, I am sitting on this matter. Do one of you gentlemen want to make a motion?
Yeah, actually, John, I just wanted to to come back to something. I believe the um the building commissioner said in his remarks last month. Um I don't have, can't quickly find it, but I thought he had some comment regarding uh the the build, the use of the building, um some consolidation requests. Has that been read into the record? Do we care?
Well, I care if we haven't addressed it, but I thought we got. Daphne, do you have it? I'll dig through here. I can try to find the building commissioner's letter.
I I think it was my memory again, this was from last month.
Don't you have the letter?
I do. I can't quickly put my hand. I have the package. Uh I'll continue to look for it, but but my memory was of the students walking from the 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 new building, the the renovated building to the temple.
The planning, the planning board made some comment about
The planning board?
The the planning board made a comment about uh movement of students that I at least my reaction was, I thought it was kind of vague and yes, they need to be moved safely, but I don't know that we're in our decision gonna describe what that means. Uh I'm sure the temple has uh at least as much interest as any of us in making sure that the children are moved safely from the new building, the temple. You want to comment, Mr. Smart? Or yes, go ahead.
Yeah, absolutely.
That those that group of children is already under the purview of the Department of Early Education and Care, so there's already restrictions on how we can walk them here and there, so that should already be covered.
I just, Howard, I just looked at the building, the building commissioner's letter and there's nothing in there.
It must have been the planning board, Nick, that 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 John was highlighting. It was a concern of movement of the students. And I think that this the fine person, the speaker, just mentioned that you're licensed and that they oversee the movement of children.
Correct.
Okay.
The Department of Early Education and Care.
Okay, and my my sense is that there's been tremendous effort uh both by the temple to to develop a build-out plan that includes more parking, uh where there's a definite demand for parking, as well as working with the neighbors on the uh landscaping and the restriction of 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 some of the the Davenport access point. So I think there's been some great progress. So if the chairman would entertain a motion, I'd like to make one.
Please do.
Move that the applicant's request for a special uh permit amendment uh under section one four two, five one one five, five one two, and five one three uh to provide relief for an extension of the two thousand fifteen permit to expand the parking lot due to the acquisition of property located at two eighty-four Webster Street and and also twenty-eight uh Greendale Ave uh two to uh allow the a waiver of strict adherence to the parking space and parking design requirements and uh C to the continuous of the pre-existing non-conforming buildings and structures and uses thereon. With the caveat that the revised landscape plan, uh I I I'm not sure, the one that was submitted today is not dated. Uh but uh that the the most recent landscape plan that has been approved by the neighbors uh be uh be part of this application and that the six conditions that were spoken about by the applicant and by the uh the concerned neighbor lawyer who was representing herself, but 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 with apparent assent of the neighbors, that those six conditions be written in as um uh conditions to the special permit.
We have a a raised hand.
Uh by the way, one one correction, I think they did say that the the plan we're referring to is dated June sixteen.
Yeah, so the plan that I received that I received has no date on it. So yeah, just whatever that most recent plan, if it's June sixteen, that would be the landscape plan the most recent. Uh and I assume that plan deals with the the shade trees being three and a half to four inch caliper uh in and also fifteen feet in height.
We'll make that ex- we'll make that explicit if it's not on the plan.
Sure, okay, so we'll make that explicit uh with respect to the the uh certain trees, the shade trees uh along the 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 boundary.
May I just, I think the height was eighteen feet and sorry, there's a I I'm sorry to interrupt.
Three and a half to four inches in caliper and eighteen feet in height.
Yes.
You want to second that, Mr. Ligerson?
Yes, but I think we should also address the four feet above at above my pay grade, but I think the benefit of the neighbors is the taller trees and I think the landscape architect said that they're originally measured six inches above, so I think if we do add uh chest height or whatever it is that he said.
I I I guess what I heard is as long as they're eighteen feet, the the caliper, they don't care where it's measured.
Okay.
John, the the DPW had some comments and there's an email from Bob Smart where their own engineer had some suggestions of what he thought might want to be put in as conditions as well.
And what were those?
Uh once the special permit amendment decision is issued, the temple will provide to the DPW a parking lot elimination plan, stormwater cowl in a letter identifying public outreach and participation control measures as the engineer had asked for.
Right.
Alright, thank you for reminding us of that. So we'll add that to the motion.
With the addition of out of the motion and the eighteen feet in height, I'll second Howard's motion.
Alright, is it, did you say that there's now a hand raised if someone else can be heard? Let's let's please hear them.
Good evening. Can you get, am I on?
We can hear you, yes.
Uh Steve Sussman, thirty Davenport Road. I don't have any objections to what has been stated tonight. I just have concerns and my two main concerns are communication with the temple, which is excellent when they're preparing to come to the this board with a proposal, but other than that, the communication is lacking. Um and compliance with what has been put forth this evening. We're still fighting things that were put forth in two fifteen that haven't been complied with in regards to lighting, shades, dead trees.
Have you gone to the building inspector?
No, I haven't. I frankly, I'm very tired of fighting with the temple. Very tired. I have fifty, sixty emails from two fifteen onward. And that's when I took breaks from writing them. It's just, I'm tired of it. I'm tired of it. You know, but they haven't complied with certain things from two fifteen and not saying the communication again for this project has been excellent, but prior to this, when you're, when they're not presenting something, there's not any communication. And that, I interpret that as not really involved in the neighborhood. They're not really that concerned with the neighbors. And I don't know if you've received my letter.
We did and we did and read it.
Thank you. Um the property is not well taken care of in regards to trash. And these projects, these expansions are just gonna exasperate this. And uh those are my concerns. Again, I don't object to to the proposals put forth tonight, though. I just am concerned.
Is there something explicit about the two thousand and fifteen permit that you don't feel they're in compliance with?
Uh we've had lighting problems, lights left on all night ever since two fifteen.
Is there something in the permit that prohibits them from leaving the lights on all night?
That, I don't know. They, we were assured when when I I think it was proposed by you guys, I mean, your agreement at the ZBA. I don't know. I don't know. I do have a copy of that somewhere.
Okay, well, if if there's something in that special permit that says they can't leave the lights on all night, um they should either comply and if they don't comply, you should go to the building inspector.
Yeah.
Is that the right avenue for um?
Enforcement.
Enforcement.
The building inspector is the enforcement of zone. And if people are not complying with the the special permit, uh you go to the building inspector. Well, I mean, ho- hopefully, you first of all, contact
Yeah.
the the temple and ask them
Who Mr. Smart, who would be the contact at the temple for concerned neighbors to to speak with?
Uh that's Ellen right now.
Contact and Steve and I email frequently.
Yes, Ellen has been great, but Ellen is since two fifteen, are you the fourth or fifth contact of the temple? It's a changing role.
Well, at least there's a contact.
Yes, so I mean, for one, I was watching, I sent a email in um two two nineteen, twenty nineteen in September, and I didn't hear back for months because they were going through transition period, but I could it's been better lately. There's still a light on all night, you know, uh as a concerned neighbor, if they're invested in the neighborhood, they should really take care of this. It seems such a simple solution, turn the lights off. They made a big deal and they were required to get light blocking shades. Well, they got them, but I don't think they're ever drawn. There are dead trees planted in two fifteen that are never looked at. So these are my concerns. And I walk out my front door and I see the temple like that with the lights on. It's not a pretty sight.
John, uh Mr. Chair, light blocking shades will
John, Mr. Chair, light blocking shades will be installed in all windows and lighted doors in the project facing the Davenport Road residences to prevent light pollution during evening activities on the premises is from the prior decision.
Okay, so, Ms. Dietrich, ho- hopefully you can comply with that term and and if they don't comply with it, I suggest that the neighbors go to the building inspector.
Absolutely. I believe last I heard from Steve, it was all set, but if it's not, then we'll check it out again tomorrow.
Yeah, I mean, I, I mean, I understand there's a practical problem. There are a lot of people there and somebody may leave a shade up, but it shouldn't be a continuous problem.
One other point, when the two fifteen project came in, the, the temple said the use of the classrooms would be till nine o'clock. I don't want the other neighbors to think that things shut down at nine o'clock. This building is going from six AM to at least eleven PM nearly every day of the year. After nine o'clock, we have, we, of, of course, we need maintenance to come into these rooms. All the lights go on while they're cleaning. It's not so bad now, the trees are in, but in the winter, it's like living in an office park here. So, the, the, the shades are not working. They don't, they don't use them. The lights, there's not a sensitivity to those of us who live around here. It's a small neighborhood. Small neighborhood, but a busy neighborhood and any kind of peace and quiet we can get is, is precious to us, you know, and.
Ho- ho- hopefully they've heard you.
Hopefully, yes, thank you.
Thank, thank, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Okay, so, so, yes.
Now, before, before there's a vote, I was just speaking with Jillian. I, I just want to be clear what trees we're talking about that are supposed to be three point five to four inch caliper and eighteen feet in height and perhaps.
The shade, the shade, the shade trees on the landscape plan.
Right, but I, how many of those are there, Nelson?
Dave, do you have that information?
Yeah, it's actually three honey locusts, honey locusts along Greendale. Those need to be at least four inches and eighteen inches high. The other citrus trees, red maple, American elm and zelkova could be three and a half to four. They're inside the property. But the, the, the shade trees along Greendale need to be the four inch, eighteen foot cal, uh, height.
And, and that's three trees, right?
That's three trees, correct.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, may I be heard briefly?
Sure, sure.
The landscaping plan dated June fourteenth was incorporated into the conditions that we sent over. May I just on the record say that I have not seen the one that they're talking about now and I, like I said, I assume it's okay, but I know that the neighbors were looking at the one dated June fourteenth, so I assume the special permit, if it is to issue today with the, or if it is to, you know, if the members vote to approve it today, won't issue tomorrow so that we will have twenty-four, forty-eight hours to.
Yeah, it, it'll be, it'll be at least three weeks before we issue this.
Right, and I could come back and.
And if you have a, if you have a problem with a new plan, please respond to Daphne.
Okay, I don't, I will, but, or.
If we, if, if we could clarify this right now, perhaps Nelson or David could explain the change between the, the June fourteenth and the June sixteenth plans.
Yes, just to clarify the fourteenth, June fourteenth, we actually had to amend the, the plant list for the white pine to show four in the list to correspond to four that was shown in the plan. So that was the fourteenth change, June fourteenth. We, I noticed today that the, the American elm picture was mislabeled. So I changed the mislabeled description underneath the picture to say American elm. So that was the only change from the June fourteenth to the June sixteenth plan.
I am confused then about what Nelson said. I, is Nelson just asking for an additional provision in the conditions that it's say eighteen feet in order to help get a contractor to comply with that?
It's not different. It's a, it's a clarification. It's not a change.
Right, right. I, I, I think I understand what you're saying. I just want to, you know, I don't, I, I just haven't seen, the, the landscape plan was a, a critical part and I, I understand that, you know, you're saying these are the only changes. I just haven't seen it. So I think.
Okay, they, they, they've represented that the only change is the change of the name of, under one of the pictures between the fourteenth, the fourteenth and the sixteenth. If there's more than that and you have a problem, just please get back to us.
And, and Ashley, you know, we'll be happy to email to you tomorrow the, the June sixteenth plan so you can see it and you can compare to the fourteenth.
Yeah, no, I, I'm sure your representations are, I just, because it was such an integral part of what we've been talking about, I just wanted to make sure that that was all that had changed. But yes, I will get back to the, i- i- if you email that to me tomorrow, I I'm sure we could turn around any comments we have. I don't suspect we will have any, you know, within twenty-four, forty-eight hours.
Okay, great.
All right. So are we ready for a vote on the motion, gentlemen?
I think we have. Was it been seconded? Yes.
Yes, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, so, um, thank you, thank you. Move forward.
Great.
I, I'm willing to take on writing the temple decision. And we have the other two. Mr. Leggerson is free, so we'll give, Mr. Goldman, why don't you take one of the other two decisions from tonight? And I'll give the other one to Mr. Tamkin.
I'll, I'll take the Wiltshire plant substitution.
Okay, I'll ask Mr. Tamkin. He also made the motion to write the decision on Highland Circle. All right, anything else we need to deal with tonight?
Look forward to seeing everybody in person next month.
Yeah, it'll be a change.
Where would we be meeting at? Where, where would we typically be meeting?
The room is at Charles River Room, our usual space. And the meeting from, based on what the tent, we will be doing it, it'll be a hybrid meeting, so we'll also have an owl so that people can attend remotely in terms of the public. The public will still be able to continue to participate remotely if they choose.
What's the date of the next meeting, Daphne, if you know?
The next meeting is.
It should be at the bottom.
It, it's out at the bottom of your agenda.
July fourteenth, at the bottom of the agenda.
July twenty. No, actually, it's July twenty-first, sorry. I, I had the wrong take there. July twenty-first.
Okay.
All right, thank you, thank you, everyone.
Thank you, good night.
Everybody. We're adjourned. Thank you, good night.
Good night.